Well, good evening. Welcome to the Seline County Planning and Zoning Mission Commission Meeting tonight, 3rd of January 2022. Start the new year off right here. To begin with, the like item number one consent agenda. Item A is approval of the agenda for January 3rd, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for January 3rd, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item one B, approval of the minutes from November 1st meeting, 2021. Any discussion or questions over the minutes? You have a motion to approve?
I wasn't there, so I was not gonna.
Mr. Chairman, I'm I move that we approve the minutes from the last, from the November 1st?
November 1st meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from November 1st. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number two, application CUP 22-101. Staff, if you want to give us an update on this one?
Yes, this is a request for approval of an accessory temporary residence to be inhabited while a primary residence is being renovated. Once renovated, the structure would remain as a residence for the care of a, long-term care of a family member. This is on a 160-acre parcel generally located at 7031 Coronado Heights in Gypsum, Kansas. In accordance with Seline County Master Plan Articles 8, the applicant is asking for approval of a 30-foot by 54-foot accessory structure, a portion of which will be used as a temporary residence while the main residence is being renovated. Once the main residence is renovated, the structure will remain an accessory residence to aid in the future care of a family member. The structure will also house a future shop studio for home occupation, which may be approved administratively by staff. The application meets the goals of the 2008 Comprehensive Plan for Appropriate Rural Development and Density. There are currently three building rights on this parcel, of which one will be applied to this use, and there's also another building right that will be applied to the existing home. The accessory residence will be located away from the designated .1% annual chance flood zone as a portion of that lot is in the flood plain. The separation distance between the primary residence and secondary residence will need to be a minimum of 100 feet so that the structures meet the minimum 50-foot setback in the event that a future lot split will take place. The use must meet all requirements of the Seline County Environmental Code. The conditions for approval are, in the event the residency status of the proposed structure changes or is abandoned for a period of six months, the designated kitchen fixtures must be removed and supply lines and drains kept, or otherwise apply for renewal of the conditional use permit. Use of the residential portion of the structure as a rental property or a guest house may be allowed only after a lot split with the required minimum acreage is approved through planning and zoning. Sale of the accessory residence may be allowed only with the minimum acreage as stated in the environmental code, which is three acres. This use must meet all requirements of the Seline County Sanitarium. Recommendation is that, staff is recommending approval of CUP 22-101 according to staff findings 1 through 8 and conditions 1 through 4. The alternatives are, the planning commission may consider to approve the application according to staff findings and, and conditions, approve the application with amended findings or conditions, table or continue for the application for future consideration, or deny the application based on findings of the planning commission. And I, in what has, this is similar to what you all have considered in the past, the most recent past being back in 2017, I think there was an accessory residence that was allowed for, on the same parcel, since only one parcel is allowed, or one residence is allowed per parcel in Seline County, and the exception to that being in the event that there's either, you know, someone wanting to put a temporary residence up for, you know, renovating a new home, or, or renovating an old, an existing home, and, or renovating a, 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 a home that's dilapidated, whatever, or a temporary residence to, for the care of someone that's related. And so, and, and this case kind of meets both of those to a certain extent, and so I wanted to include as many conditions as possible to give you guys the options to, to consider, so.
Okay. Any questions for staff in the commission?
Tim, has a sanitarian looked at this plan yet?
Yes.
Have they had a chance?
Yes.
So there's, they've considered there'd be enough room around that accessory?
Yes.
To, for another septic?
Yeah, I've made sure, and I, I talked with, with one of our, the main sanitarians that, and, and he was telling me that he had no issue with it as long as he had enough room there to, if, in the event that they split it, they would have enough room for the separation distance between the property line and like, let's say, a lateral line.
Okay.
Well.
All right, thank you.
Tim, you realize this is a heavy place to work. This is gonna be a pretty substantial septic system.
Yes, and, and he understands that. Yeah, the, the applicant, I think, is, has been in consultation with the environmental, you know, the environmental department, so.
Our ordinance is state that every quarter has two building rights. This is the third time you've come to us and said that there were three building rights on the floor. Where are you finding these additional building rights?
The, the way that the, that it's written is that there's two building rights. In the event that there is, if it's an original parcel, they get one additional building right.
No, they get, when they split, they get the original and the secondary. That's what the ordinance is saying.
Okay.
That's two buildings. That's all you get on the floor. You don't get an original too.
I'm just re, I, I remember what I was reading on the, from what we have in the, in the regs, and I said it's, the way that I interpreted it was, you have one building right for every 80 acres, and if it's an original parcel that was not split back in 1978, that, and there's a homestead that's on there, there's one that goes, that, another, it's, it's, it's one per 80 plus one. So, for every 80 acres, they get one, then plus one for the existing homestead that's there.
Am I the only one that speaks to this?
That's, that's the way I understand what, what Tim's saying.
Because it was only the original, the ones that were grandfathered in, was my understanding.
A partial lot or tract that is recorded as county district. Sure to be, 1978 is defined as the original parcel. Once the property lines of the original parcel are moved or adjusted resulting in a smaller parcel, the parcel will come to secondary. So once you split, you have an original and a secondary.
This one hasn't been split.
Correct, correct. Any original or secondary parcel may be split into two tracks that meet current zoning regulations and are used for agricultural or single-family use purposes in the following manner. Number of splits allowed per parcel shall be based on the density dwelling units per acre, the UVA in the Ag zoning district, the density of whatever it is for, basically like .0125 dwelling units per acre, or one dwelling unit for every 80 acres. Now, section has two 80 acres, and it's two buildings. I agree with all y'all on that. Allowable splits for existing secondary parcels, secondary parcels in existence prior to the adoption of this policy, one split or building right for every 80 acres. Where am I wrong?
My understanding, and it's my interpretation, was that.
Well, if it's a quarter, that's two 80s, they get, they get two original building rights plus an extra one. That's three.
And granted, I was on the board back in the 90s, and then off, you know, first 2000, and then back, but it was clearly stated in the policy then, there was two building sites per quarter. Once you split, one of them goes.
With the original?
One's the original, one's the secondary. We're gonna have to discuss this.
I haven't, I haven't read it for a long, long time.
In the future, to make sure that we are all in agreement on this, because on this particular issue, if that secondary building site is going to be lived in, then that becomes the other split, the secondary split for somebody living.
That's correct.
But it still meets the requirement.
It's.
It still meets the requirement.
Even, yeah. Okay, okay, and, yeah, and I'll, I can double-check all of that, but I said, I don't think that, right now, I think that, based on what's being proposed, I, I think that he'll, in the event, basically what you can do is just say if there's, if you're saying that there's two, what you can do is say that there's, in the event that they do split that off, that they would have to go through a subdivision exception and ag deed restrict whatever's left. That could be a, you know.
Because I know this is very similar to what I did in 1997 when I built my house.
Okay.
And I had to remove my other house, or else it would leave.
Right.
Now, it's not right compared to what you're saying. That's right based on what I've been saying, but if I had a third site, an original plus one, then I would've said no.
Okay, the, all I can tell you is that, you know, it's, it's, right now, I said, if they were to go ahead and, and put this on there, it would be, they would, you know, they would have two, they've got two building rights. Let's say they have two building rights. One of those building rights goes with the house that's already there, unless they decide to tear it down, based on its, its condition, and then they'll, they can replace it, at which point that one that went with the, the previous house will go with that house, and then this accessory residence is, you know, like we've done in the past, previously with individuals that have family members that want to be taken, need to be taken care of, or in the potential, long-term care situation, you can, you know, make it so that it's temporary and, and that they, it has to be removed, and that's, that's what I've tried to cover in all of this.
And you do a good job. My only contention is, I keep seeing these three building sites on the quarter.
Right, right.
My only contention.
Right.
So I, I, I want us as a group to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that. I'd wholeheartedly agree with what Paul's saying. Let's, let's discuss this, maybe have Tim dig into it a little bit more. This isn't a discussion that concerns this, I mean, kind of concerns this, kind of does.
But it doesn't prevent us doing anything.
That's, yeah, it doesn't prevent us from doing anything on this, this.
But we probably need to look at it in a future meeting and.
Yeah, and I, I am willing to do that. I'll, I'll look into it. The trouble is, we've got, I use the GIS aerial maps, and the GIS aerials have, you know, you know, a, where the building rights are, you know, for each parcel. A lot of times, and, and I double-check with the aerial, the aerials that we have in our, on, you know, the paper copies that we have, going back to whenever it was, 1992, that somebody put together showing where all the building rights were per parcel, and I can go back and make sure that both, both coincide with each other.
Right.
You know, but I, I tend to, they, they tend to, I want to say they tend to agree. Sometimes they don't, but I said it's, in cases where there's larger acreages, they're, they, they tend to be, you know, simply, you know, the, the same. They send, you see, you see the same number on, you know, the GIS that you would on the paper copies, so. But I'll double-check for you guys, and I'll let you know, and if you want to, I can follow up with you at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
It's just something we need to.
We need to clarify and make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Exactly right, because my bias comes from.
Having to deal with it.
Having to deal with it.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I like to see it as an agenda item, just more or less for study session for us, if nothing else.
Sure.
I mean.
Sure, yeah. Okay.
And I did not mean to distract from.
No, but that's, that's important.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up. I mean, and, and that's, you know, I have no, no issue with, with researching it for you.
Any other questions for staff regarding this application? All right, is the applicant here? Would they like to address this on this topic at all?
Mr. Kromer? He's in Wichita.
Okay.
I think part of it is that he's in Wichita, and he couldn't make it. I'm guessing. I didn't hear from him, but I think we did send him a. We, we did send him a notice.
So if you want to, we can, if you want the applicant here, I said, we can go ahead and just, if you want to hold off and table it until he's here, or you can just, if you're comfortable enough making, you know, based on my conditions.
Any questions that we would need to get clarification from the applicant?
I don't have any. You know, my, my only issue is setback. Are they separated enough that if they do choose to use two, then you can split that acre out or that three.
So they need the 50-foot setback, for sure.
So that we.
And that is one of the conditions.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, that septic system has to be on that lot.
Not split.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I think Sean has been working with him on that, and I think that's what, what he's, was telling him, so.
Would we want to clarify that condition, that the septic system must be included in the setback?
Yeah, we can, and, and, well, I kind of generally said it here, and when it says must meet the, the requirements of the sanitarian, and so, but you can be more specific if you want, and just say it has to meet the setback.
Seems to be pretty well laid out. Any other questions or discussion? Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make, I would like to move that we approve CUP 22-101 with the conditions set forth by staff.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve application CUP 22-101 with conditions, with, already detailed by staff, 1 through 4. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next item, three, application CUP 22-102.
Okay, this is a consideration of a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow a 355-foot telecommunications tower on the 36-acre parcel of land located in Section 29 Township 15 South, Range 1 West, and located in the northeast corner of South Whitmore Road and K4 Highway owned by Bowden Family Irrevocable Trust. And this is for a, at the request of, this is going to be on Bowden Family Irrevocable Trust as the owner. The applicant is Parallel Towers 3 LLC. Existing land use is agricultural. I have the correction on your staff reports that's actually a 355-foot tower. This parcel is zoned agricultural and within the rural development area. Findings are that the parcel is not located within the regulatory flood plain. The applicant is proposing a 355-foot tall communications tower. The tower will be located on leased space of .2 acres based on the current location. Tower will be approximately 358 feet from the west property line, more than 355 feet from the north and south property lines of the parcel. Tower is not located within the airport buffer zone. Applicant has submitted the site plan. There is one existing 300-foot tower located within a half-mile of the proposed location, which was approved back in 2012. Due to height, the applicant may not be able to co-locate. I, I put that in there because, you know, a lot of times because the technology changes, but that's, I'm sure the applicants are here and they can explain it better than I can. FAA and FCC documentations must be submitted. Staff has received, since, since this has gone out, staff has received a couple of comments by email, and so what I was going to do is read those for the record, if you, if you don't mind.
Sure.
It's, this is from a, from Jim McDowell, that says, "I am writing you to tell you that the Parallel Tower, about the Parallel Towers request to build a tower on Whitmore Road. My, I guess my question is, do we really need it? There are over 20 towers in the area that I can see from my home, and there is an existing tower about 1,500 feet from where they want to build another one. I was not happy to see the last tower go up so close to my home. No one wants to look out their window and see the towers. Would you want them in your backyard, people that live in the area do not want the property values to go down? I understand towers are needed for adequate cell coverage. However, current towers provided that, and in addition, it appears that the tower at the current location can be enhanced with additional equipment to provide upgrade functionality. Why unnecessarily clutter the landscape with new eyesores?" I'm writing to, to you instead to, rather than coming to the meeting because he said he was, because of the restrictions for their, the COVID concerns. So, that's, that's the, the one that I've received via email for that particular case, and so I will go ahead and finish going over my staff report. And this parcel is not located within the regulatory flood plain. The applicant is proposing the 355-foot tall communications tower. Tower will be located on leased space of .2 acres. The, based on what, the review criteria on our second page, the, we haven't received any other comments from other departments either. I'm going to tell you that as well. The location, size, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed development will be compatible with and will not adversely affect livability or appropriate development of, of abutting properties. This use would be consistent with other similar uses approved in the recent past for communication towers. The use poses no adverse impact on the adjacent properties and uses with no effect on traffic in the area. The location, design, and site planning of the proposed development will provide a convenient and functional living, shopping, or civic space. This use may not pose any aesthetic issues for the area, as most of the surrounding properties are ag-related uses. You do have some residential uses within the area. The proposed development will enhance or successfully, successful operation of the surrounding area and its basic community functions. So, tower. of the surrounding area and its basic community functions. So tower may provide improved service in the area. Staff recommendations, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. Building permit will need, will not be issued until a commercial permit review has been completed. All FAA and FCC approvals must be submitted to staff prior to the building permit approval. Approve, the alternatives would be to either approve the request with the conditions as listed above, conditionally approve the request with other conditions that the commission deems necessary. And with that, I will turn that over to the chair.
Okay. Any questions for staff on the overview here?
Okay. Do you guys know we need another tower out there? Why do we need another tower?
That'll be a question for the applicant.
Well, I mean, some of you guys must be living out there. Is there a need? You've got one person that already said, hey, there's enough towers out there. And this goes back to many months ago. Tim, I had asked for maps on all the towers.
Right.
So we knew where these towers were located, so that we could talk about co-location.
Right.
So that we wouldn't be discriminated against towers. We'd be able to say, why are you not co-located? I personally have a mythology of southeast corner of the state, to this county.
I can tell you from experience, I don't live out there, but it's not great. The coverage is not good. As you know, I was county clerk for 17 years, and cell service in the southern, whole southern part of Saline County is not great.
That's kind of what my impression is.
Yeah. And so, I mean, I, I don't live out there, but I, I know from experience, from going to Assyria and Gypsum and Fallen and Smolin and areas in between, it's not real good. And I've had, I've had Verizon, and I'm currently on T-Mobile, and it's the same thing. So.
Well, I do have friends in Gypsum that say they have coverage problems.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Commission? All right. Is the applicant present? Would they like to approach the podium?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I need to be sworn in or anything?
No. Just state your name and address.
Sure. Jackson Nadinger with Selective Solutions. Address is 340 Marshall Road, Valley Park, Missouri, 63088. And if I may, I've got some packets I'd like to hand out real quick.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So first of all, I want to thank staff for the, the report. You know, we, no disagreements there. Agree with, with all of the conclusions that were drawn from that. And if I could, I'd like to briefly run through this, this packet that I just handed out, starting with the, the first section showing the site plan. And, and this is mirroring what was submitted with the application for CUP. Really, this is showing the, the overall parcel and the location of the, the proposed site. The, the, the second page after that is, is a blown-up view, showing the, the 100-by-100 lease area. We're planning on fencing initially 50-foot by 50-foot. That's going to contain all of the, the ground equipment and, and utilities that are going to be brought to the site. One thing to point out here is that the, the tower height of 355, we, we chose this location very specifically. We meet and exceed all of the setbacks. So we are more than a one-to-one setback from all of the, the property lines. The next section is, is kind of the same thing, just showing a, kind of an aerial overlay, showing the, the existing use is, there's no existing improvements on that parcel. The next section is the, is the zoning map, showing that, again, you know, per staff report, it's agriculture use, agriculturally zoned, as are all of the adjacent and, as well as nearby parcels. The, the nearest parcel that is not agriculturally zoned is actually industrial. It's IH, I believe that's industrial.
Yes. Heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial. The, the next few pages are photographs of the site, and, and these are going to look really similar to, you know, e, each one to the next. The first one is just showing the, the entrance off of Whitmore Road. The proposed gravel drive would, would utilize that existing opening in the fence. Those next few shots are just kind of looking out from the existing site. And the, the last photograph in there is showing the, there is a HCI buried fiber optic cable sign. That is running north-south on Whitmore, and that will be utilized for the, the communications. The next section I've got is the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which, and Mr. Fennel, is it? You touched on the discrimination of, of towers, and I, and I'll get more into that in, in just a minute, but that does kind of touch on, on the discrimination aspect. All righty. So moving into the, the staff report a little bit more, kind of touching on the, the, the CUP review criteria. The, the first one is, the, the staff is stating this use would be consistent with other similar uses approved in the recent past for communications towers. I, I don't know if, if the, the tower nearby is considered one of the, the recent past approvals. That was back in 2012. But what I can say is, you know, for, for the, the location, design, operating characteristics, et cetera. Again, the location, the, the location was chosen very deliberately. We are meeting the, meeting and/or exceeding the, the setbacks to property lines. The design, the design could not be more in line with the, the, you know, the, the design of the, of the neighboring structure. So as far as neighborhood characteristics go, you know, it's, it's nothing out of the ordinary. Nothing that hasn't been approved by, by the county in the past. Operating characteristics, it's an unmanned facility. It'll be rarely visited. You know, techs would go out occasionally to ensure that smooth operation of the equipment. Obviously, there would be upgrades here and there, but after initial construction, you know, light to minimal to none traffic. The, the, the use, this is again, the quoting, the staff report here, this use may not pose any aesthetic issues for the area, as most of the surrounding properties are ag-related uses. Again, we, you know, we chose this location very carefully. It will provide functional, convenient living environment by providing additional infrastructure for day-to-day life. You know, especially, you know, there, there was already a gentleman that, that wanted to come that couldn't due to COVID restrictions and, and, and concerns. You know, the, the past two years, the work from home, telecommuting, and, and remote learning especially, has just highlighted the, the need for, for robust telecommunications connectivity. And, and this will, this will, you know, we're, we're proposing infrastructure that can deliver that connectivity. And then that kind of ties into the, the, the next item, that the proposed development will, will enhance the successful operation of the surrounding area and basic community functions, or will provide an essential service to the community or region. I can't think of a more essential service. I mean, there's water, power, sanitary, obviously, we were just talking about that, and, and communications. So, you know, every, every farmer, you know, I know there's, there's some oil operations out there, and, you know, citizens at large, passersby, you know, they'll, they'll all operate better with the enhancement of the available infrastructure. It's, you know, it's really part and parcel to, to really everyday life, especially for operations of, of, of business. And, you know, the, the, the fact that this meeting's being held on, on Zoom just, you know, goes to highlight that. You know, it's business, personal, and, and government as well. One of the concerns that was brought up by, by the, the citizen that supplied the email to staff was proximity to existing residences. You know, it's, it's, it's a, you know, matter of the fact is that these towers are needed. They're not the prettiest things, but, but they are, they are needed. The, and in fact, the, the existing tower is, my measurement put it about 927 feet away from the nearest residence, whereas this, our proposed location is actually nearly double. We're at almost 1,800 feet from the, the nearest residence. So as far as proximity, you know, the, the location is chosen because that's where the need for the service is, and that is driven by, by population. So it, it doesn't come as a surprise that, that population drives the, the need for coverage. And so with that, I would ask if there's any questions?
Any questions of the applicant?
I'd like to ask, is there, what's approximate range off that tower? Is there, is there a figure, like so many miles arranged, depending on where that cell sits?
Yeah. So, and, and that's a, that's a good question, and it's a difficult one to answer.
I figured it would be.
You know, and I'm certainly no RF engineer. I, I won't pretend to be one. The, the, when these carriers were first building their networks, it, it really was a, a matter of how far can this signal reach? You know, let's say, and these are, these are rough numbers, let's say a tower can service 100 phone calls at a time. Well, you know, if that signal went out, let's say five miles, there, there's a good chance there might not even be 100 phones in existence in that, in that five-mile radius. And this was, this was years and years ago. Nowadays, it's, it's not so much the footprint that can be covered by a tower as much as the, 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 the number of subscribers that can be on that tower at one time. So as the, the number of subscribers and users and, and passersby and, you know, people traveling for the holidays, and, you know, they got four kids in the back, each with a cellphone, they're all streaming Netflix and YouTube and everything. Each one of those is a drain on that tower. And so the, the, the physical footprint starts large, and it, it is, it is pulled in by the, by the increased usage.
Okay.
So what we're, what we're really talking about is, is not so much coverage footprint as much as capacity these days.
That comment I made earlier about being out there on election day, very important that I get calls coming to me, and very important for me to be able to send them out. Well, the sheriff's office has dealt with that for years. Of course, they have radios that can use now, but they, I remember sheriff's office having horrible time getting cellphone service in that area, that whole southern tier area down there. So.
Sure.
What it is today for them, I don't know. But I was just out there this last election, and it wasn't real great service.
Right. And, you know, this, this tower, again, is, is providing the infrastructure that's needed so that when carriers do come to augment their existing coverage, that, 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 that is there.
Right.
You know, it, it's a lot like, you know, if you build it, they will come, you know, it, it's the, the same as, as power lines and, and roads. You know, if, if, if there's an area that's undeveloped, the, the infrastructure is needed for, to, you know, to drive that, the, the future development otherwise. And that, that's, that's exactly what we're proposing here.
So are you the landman? You're sitting here not being a engineer, so are you the landman on this?
Yeah. So Selective Solutions, my company, we're a site acquisition firm. So we, we deal with basically everything, what we call left of the building permit.
If you're interested in putting up towers, you could care less how many right now you're going to tow.
Well, I, I suppose yes.
So did AT&amp;T come to you, or did you move to AT&amp;T?
No, I'm, so I'm working for, for Parallel, the, the actual tower company. Now, Parallel was, was approached by AT&amp;T. But this, this is not an, an AT&amp;T tower. It's being built for, you know, I, I think the plans right now are either three or four carriers. So it's, it's being engineered right off the bat for, for not just AT&amp;T, but Verizon. Dish Network, now goes by Dish, they are in the process of, of launching from the ground up a, a, a whole new network. I guess you could say kind of replacing one of the big four with, with T-Mobile and Sprint having merged in the recent past. So there's, you know, there's AT&amp;T, Verizon, Dish, T-Mobile, and then, you know, it's also available for, for any other users, whether it be, you know, we were talking about the, the sheriff's department using radios. There's, AT&amp;T actually has a, a network called FirstNet that is, it's a cell network that is restricted specifically for first responders, fire, police, EMS, things of that nature. So.
If you're the landman, I assume you're going to provide a lease by antenna, not by tower?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, if I'm a landlord, I'd like to have, I'd like to be paid for every antenna for that, not for every tariff for that.
I mean, I, I suppose, you know, I.
That was a business site, Tom.
All right. Yeah. I mean, I, I work on the pay plan. That's all I can tell you.
Why was it not considered to use the existing structure?
So again, you know, we're, we're, I am here on behalf of Parallel, which is a, a tower company. So that's like saying, why would a, excuse me, why would a McDonald's open up if there's a Burger King across town?
So would you need AT&amp;T represented here to come and help?
Well, and, and I can go into why AT&amp;T, you know, why, I guess what you're asking is why is this searching here? Why, why this tower? Why at this location?
I was asking if I could.
Okay. So, yeah. So AT&amp;T, for a long time, at a, at a national level, has been working with, it's a tower, it's a, it's another tower company called SBA. They are the owners of the, the, the tower that is a couple parcels over. And what AT&amp;T and SBA, excuse me, have been discussing at, at a national level is taking a, another look at the, the rent that they are paying, that they being AT&amp;T is paying SBA. So this is not a, this is not a one-off, hey, they're paying too much on this one tower. This is a systematic issue that AT&amp;T and SBA have been discussing for, for years and, and have not been able to come to a conclusion. I, I do have a letter. It's dated December of, of 2019. Unfortunately, I don't have a copy that I can give you right now, that AT&amp;T sent the, the tower owner basically state, stating that, you know, hey, we need to take another look at, at these four items of our, of our lease. One of them being the, the overall lease rights. So AT&amp;T and their existing lease with SBA, it's structured in such a way that when AT&amp;T goes to upgrade or, or swap out its equipment on the tower, that a, that their, their monthly rent can be increased every time they touch the tower, essentially. And so essentially what that means, especially on a, on a nationwide level, is that it, it slows the, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's trash day tomorrow. It, it really slows, it hampers the development of the, of AT&amp;T's network. So essentially, you know, if, if, let's say they've got, you know, 10 towers, five of them are owned by SBA, and five are owned by other tower companies that have a more market value, a more realistic. a more realistic lease structure. It is, it is more, you know, AT&T's a business, you know, and I can't, I can't get into the minds of the, the business decisions of AT&T. But, I mean, I, I think it's pretty easy to see that it would make more fiscal sense if you can, if you can upgrade these five towers that, that won't increase your costs, have a, have a more market steady, uh, uh, fair market rate, upgrade those sites rather than take, touching these five SBA sites that are going to, you know, each, each one of those is then going to increase in rent.
Well, you know, we have no intention of discriminating on the use of tower, but we have the ability to say, look, there's existing infrastructure here that needs to be looked at before we approve additional towers.
I, I need to point something out, just for a, a moment here. I'm reading out of our code of ordinances under the CUP review criteria. The Saline County Planning Commission will not make, make a decision based on quality of service provided, technical considerations regarding the equipment, effects of equipment on electronic transmissions, the ability of a service provider to co-locate or locate on other property, and removal of existing structures. And so, but it says the Saline County Planning Commission will consider hazards to rights of way, roadway easements, and hazards to stormwater drainage, hazards to development in the floodplain or floodway, and the effect of the facility on the character of the neighborhood, and the protection of view sheds and other public health, safety, and welfare provisions. So it's, and I, I'm not sure about as far as the, the view sheds. I don't think that we have any defined view sheds in, in Saline County. And I, I was gonna ask you guys that, you know, and later on, I was gonna bring this up and see if there was any. But are there any view shed considerations, you know, those areas that are, you know, protected by? I don't think, you know, I've, I've not run across any in the three years I've been here. I've not run across.
I don't recall anything.
No?
All right, so we can't discriminate. It just basically said you guys are approved.
That's, that's, we're, we're just asking for a fair shake.
I would just like to see people go up there. I build with landmen, give them some passion.
All righty.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'll start with the introduction, but not the swearing in as well. Luke Van Flotteren, thirty thirty-three, North Topaz Circle in Wichita, Kansas. I'm an attorney, and I represent SBA Towers Five, who has the, the tower right nearby as well. I've got packets of my own, if I can pass them out. Clip together, I'll just pass, that's nice and good and safe. And I can give a little bit of brief background, so as not to take up too much time while we're passing these. But SBA owns and operates the existing tower that was being talked about. As the applicant mentioned, it's a similar design. It's SBA's position that additional towers, this particular application for conditional use permit is not needed. The, it looks like everyone's got the packet. It's just the one clip together, I just made a lot of copies. The, the first, first page of the packet is a aerial map of the existing tower. So the little green X, if you can see it. The circle is the current CUP application tower. By my math, we're about point three miles apart, very near to each other. That is important for a couple of reasons, including some of the, the concerns that were raised here. A little bit more though, the, the current SBA tower is right around three hundred feet tall. It's my understanding this proposed tower is three hundred and fifty-five feet. The SBA tower was built in 2013, but it is technologically up to date. Updates were made as recently as last year on the existing tower. That, I'm bouncing here a little bit, but the, the concern about AT&T, I do think is an important one because it's been raised. AT&T is an existing tenant, there, there's room to co-locate, so there are a couple tenants here for the SBA tower. But AT&T is an existing tenant. As I read, the permit application, AT&T and the design drawings is identified as the anchor tenant for the applicant's tower, which is to say there's, SBA's tower is point three miles away. It's got AT&T's up-to-date equipment on it. The applications for a tower point three miles away that will service AT&T and provide effectively the same coverage. So there are some concerns or mention I saw in the application, as well as what's been raised here tonight, about needing reliable connection, needing cell service, the importance of the tower. SBA certainly doesn't dispute that. The issue is, from our reading of this application, it's just AT&T locating a quarter mile up the road, so to speak. I did, and so this is, this is the only thing I'll mention that's out of order as you flip through the packet. But at the very end, there's a letter from an SBA representative that will address, and you don't necessarily need to read it right now, but that addresses some of the, this AT&T issue that's been raised. And so that's SBA's position on the matters. They've been working with AT&T. There was, I guess I mentioned about what AT&T's business consideration is with all of this. I can just say that SBA has an existing lease. The parties negotiated, I'm an Alabama football fan, I was watching the, the Cotton Bowl at AT&T Stadium. SBA is not the big bad company here, that they negotiated a lease with AT&T. If AT&T doesn't like the terms, that's maybe not an issue for the residents of this county to, to have to deal with or end up with cell tower on top of cell tower without any limit. The next, if you're flipping through the packet, the next several pages, these color photos are propagation maps. Again, there was some concern raised about what will this do for existing cell coverage? You can see effectively, it, it's about four point four miles of a radius around SBA's existing tower. It's about four point four miles radius. If you flip, you've got the different frequencies, there's seven hundred megahertz, and then you'll flip through to eight hundred and fifty and so on with the frequencies. But these are just meant to line up one after the other. Here's the current coverage, again, from AT&T. And then the, the subsequent page would be the proposed coverage from the new applicant. It's, again, effectively the same circles, they're moving about point three miles north and to the west, because that's where the tower's located. But not a material change in the actual coverage being provided, which again is important. I also won't pretend to be an engineer, but generally speaking, if you're looking at this map, green and blue is strong coverage, yellow is marginal coverage, and red is poor coverage associated with potential call failures. There was mentioned to you, just a minute ago, out the telecommunications act, mentioned that you can't discriminate. If you've got that language, and if not, I don't, that's not part of my packet, I don't have it in front of you, but it does say that local authorities can't discriminate against providers. That's not the same as the cell towers themselves. The, the federal telecommunications act doesn't say that you always have to say yes to a cell tower every time. You couldn't say no to a tower because you don't like AT&T, but you like Verizon or Dish or whoever else. And so denying this particular application wouldn't run afoul of the federal telecommunications act. I did want to, and I printed out just a, a couple portions of the code of ordinances. Let's see, I think it's pages seventy-five through seventy-eight of the code, so it's chapter thirteen. And there were a couple of things that I wanted to mention, just with respect to this specific application. That might be all or most of what you're concerned about here today is, is this portion. It should all have my highlights on it as well. So there is some mention of what can and can't be considered for those CUP applications. As I read, and it's on page seventy-six, this is not one of my highlights, but page one through five, what the county planning commission will not make the decision based on is what we had mentioned, or what was discussed previously. Again, this is my reading, but I don't see where it says you can't consider the existence or the, the presence of an existing tower. So quality of service, it can't be considered, technical considerations, the ability of the applicant's structure to co-locate. But again, at, at least the way I'm looking at this, it's SBA's position that you can consider the, the presence of a, a tower that's, again, right up the road. Couple other points with respect to the ordinances. And I have flipped over to page seventy-seven now. So again, this is, this is my reading, I'm happy to, to hear if you all are reading this differently, but the administrative development permits required, so that's twelve point fourteen point oh five, says these permits are required for the construction of a new pole or tower. There are exemptions to the permit exemptions, and I, if I was hearing correctly, this, this particular equipment is not based in a floodplain, flood area. But it's our position, this is not a, a ground-based equipment. There, there is ground-based equipment associated with these towers, but they're in provision A1. Says that the administrative development permit is required for construction of a new pole or tower. If that is the case, and now I'm still on page seventy-seven, subsection C, the application requirements would require construction drawings showing a site plan and a structure analysis. Both of those need to be stamped by a Kansas licensed engineer. I'm going off of the information that I was provided. I, I did see with the application, there were ten pages of designed drawings that were stamped by a surveyor. Did not see a stamp from a licensed engineer, however. If that's the case, and if you're reading this provision as, as I'm reading it, to acquire that administrative development permit, it's SBA's position that would be required as well. And I did hear mention of the statement of FAA compliance. Similarly, that's number four, and it's our position that would be required. One more, and I'll flip onto page seventy-eight of this. There are development standards, regardless of where the tower is located. There's a maximum allowed height of three hundred and fifty feet, and this proposed tower is three hundred and fifty-five feet. So again, on, on that grounds, we would assert that the tower as proposed is deficient. And I guess those are, so those, those are the technical aspects. And I will just mention, from the reading of the, the federal telecommunications act, looking at a bunch of cases where courts have assessed these sort of issues. There are whether or not it's a, a specific factor in the zoning code. Courts have allowed local authorities to consider things like community opposition, aesthetics of whatever the conditional use application is, including cell towers. And so to the extent there's community opposition, that's certainly something you can require. So that's sort of it for what I have. I'm certainly willing to take questions if you've got any questions of me.
Any questions from the?
I have a question, but I appreciate you taking that of you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would like to address a couple of items that were presented. The administrative development permits required, that's usually a, the way it's worded is that's actually a building permit. And so they would have to, they, they would do that anyway. The, with regard to application requirements, construction drawings showing a site plan, elevations describing in detail the method of construction of the tower. Plans must be stamped by a Kansas licensed engineer. And oftentimes, and staff, I admit, doesn't normally check this, but usually whenever you have structural drawings that are submitted, and it says it's done by a surveyor, usually it's, surveyors will have on-staff engineers, and engineers are surveyors. Not all surveyors are engineers, but usually when you have someone presenting a structural item, now they can, they, they, you know, whether they should, you know, include their seal as a licensed engineer, I'm not sure. You know, I mean, that's, I mean, but it's a, I know that there are several firms in, in Kansas where you have a surveyor available that's also an engineer, and a lot of times that will just stamp the surveyor stamp, you know, and not the engineer stamp. Correct.
Is, does that need to be validated though for the building permit?
We can get it validated from an engineer, that could be a condition that you put on there, you know, and have it verified and validated by, you know, an engineer, you know, before a permit is issued. But I said usually whenever you see, I've run, I've, I've been doing this for like seventeen years, and all the ones that I've seen, I've only seen maybe, when you, when you talk about, you know, surveyors and, and detailed drawings and things, and usually they're spec drawings, and the spec drawings are usually done by, you know, the, the, you know, whoever it is that the provider has hired as the, the engineer or the designer. And they'll have spec drawings, and it's like when I dealt with an AT&T tower a few years back, they had these, the, the, the plans were stamped by basically an, an onsite or on, on-staff engineer from, you know, whoever AT&T had hired to, to, to do the, the drawings. So it's, if you want to, you can make that as a condition, is just verify it with a, you know, prior to a building permit being issued, that they would have to verify with, submit a verification from an engineer and as, as a condition of approval. The other thing is, you could also do the same thing with the FAA statement of compliance for a new tower, increase in tower height. You can grant a variance, we've done it in the past with a three, you know, three hundred and fifty is the, is the max, but you can grant a variance of three fifty-five if, you know, if, if deemed necessary. With regard to the other issues, I think they were already, I've already addressed those. Public health, safety, and general welfare, effect of the facility, facility on the character of the neighborhood. Again, it's, we aren't given, and while it's, you know, comments, you can consider comments from the public, but based on what I've, the, the code of ordinances, there's one section in there that states that in the event that you're close to a residential zone, then you can require additional setback requirements from that zone if the, and, and you would take into account public comment at that point. But that's the only time. But that's the only time public comment with regard to siding is mentioned in our zoning regs. So, but with that, though, I mean, that's basically everything's, I think I've, staff has addressed pretty much those issues.
Question regarding the height.
Yes.
The only exemptions I think we've given were for public safety towers, correct?
Well, it's, you're, in the recent past, yes. But I said, it's, the Code of Ordinances gives you the ability to grant a variance of five, you know, the five foot or whatever it is that they would want. And so it's up, it's your call.
Okay.
Twenty-five years ago, this specific issue came up. And we were discussing how we were going to have cell towers in the county. And one of our fears was that we were going to have multiple towers put up because wireless companies wanted, didn't like the price, and they wanted to go someplace else. You guys remember when I came on board, I asked for a map of all the cell towers and all the antennas. Well, they'd come back to haunt you. Now, I don't know why I asked for it. This is a specific instance where twenty-five years ago, we were concerned about something. And twenty-five years later, we have to go. And you're going to see more and more of it. This does not have an issue of co-location because it's already a company that's on a tower. We're not co-locating anything. They're wanting their own tower for their own price. And you're going to start seeing more and more of it.
And what staff can do when we update, we're in the comp plan, update now. But I said, when we update our zoning regs, one of the things that we'll probably want to look at is I will probably do some research into what legal, but legally, we can put in our regulations for you guys to consider. This is, I mean, basically what we've read off tonight is legally what's in there now, what was approved in terms of what conditions you can place on it, you know, which isn't, you know, a lot. But it's always been my contention that both the federal and the state agencies, you know, the feds have made it, you know, back in, well, I'll give you a personal experience. Okay, I've been, like I said, I've been doing this since about two thousand and six. Back then, I remember we had one, in one of the jurisdictions I was at, I would always get calls from the providers before they would get a site. They would have a site in mind. They would call the administrative agency or the regulating agency, which would have been me, and ask, are there any issues with this property? You know, I say, is it in the floodplain? Is it an airport buffer? Is it, you know, wherever? Well, what's been happening, I would say, as the telecommunications law has, you know, changed over the years, there's been few and fewer and fewer input from, you know, precursory kind of inquiries to the administrative agencies at the local level. And we were usually at this point, you know, the last to know, you know, that there's going to be a tower going. And we're the last hurdle that they have to go through. And usually, but I remember, though, a time when, you know, that used to not be the case, where it would be like, there was more kind of a proactive, okay, is this acceptable in this location or whatever? And they would, the provider would ask, formally request, you know, a zoning certification for that area. And I'd have to provide like a map showing and a letter detailing if there were any issues. And then they would, if there were any issues, they would say, well, we can't do that. And it's, as the times have changed and as we've moved forward, I said, it's been different. We've, what, you know, now usually it's, like I said, we're the last ones to, the last hurdle, if you will, that the provider goes through, you know, at the local level. So with that, though, I'll just, I will look into what legally we can put in our zoning regulations when we update them so that when we consider future proposals, what we can do. Because, but tonight, as far as like whether or not it's the different conditions I put on there, and if you want to, you can add the engineer's stamp as a condition of approval along with the other items as well to submit for FAA, I was already said FAA compliant letter and FCC documentation as a condition of approval as well. So.
Okay. I believe we had a few more people wish to discuss this topic.
I'm Glenda Mutchler, sixty-nine seventeen South Whitmore Road, Gypsum, Kansas. My husband and I have lived in our home for thirty years. We have direct sight of the existing tower. We will have direct sight of the new proposed tower. We've had cell phone service since cell phone service came about, and we've never had an issue. So I guess part of my question is, if this new tower isn't going to provide any better coverage, if the defect is in the gypsum area, why not build a tower closer to gypsum than right next to an existing tower? We will have both of these in direct line of sight from our property. And to me, it seems ridiculous to build the expense of another tower when it isn't going to provide any better service for the people who need it. Because the people right close to the existing tower have perfect service. We have no problems with service whatsoever. So I would vote no against this tower.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment from the public?
John Bowden, I live here in Slyna. But I'm part of the trustees of the Bowden family, Irrevocable Trust there. In regards to the close, the proximity to the other towers and everything here, people are concerned about that in the email that was sent there. I kind of have an idea who sent that email. And he lives a mile and a half away. And if he was going to use that criteria there, all these wind turbines and stuff, you can see for ten or fifteen miles away, he would be using the same argument opposing those wind towers. And also in regards to, why don't they move it to the southeast part of the county there? Well, Gypsum is in a valley. This is a hilly area there. And I understand that it's just one more thing in the, people complained about the telephone lines and electrical lines when electricity came into the country. So it's nothing new. People complain. It's just something you have to get used to. We're sure, we're glad we have electricity now. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments from the public?
Thank you. Yeah, I did just want to add that, you know, we'd be absolutely accepting of all the conditions that have been mentioned. As far as the engineer's stamp on drawings and structural analysis and things of that nature, I mean, that's something that we do with every project that we've ever done. It's just, like staff was saying, it's something that is typically addressed during the building permit stage. So, you know, while we don't have that stuff necessarily in hand right now, it is in process. And, you know, we would, you know, before a shovel would hit the ground, we would finish up with the rest of the approvals from the county, including building permits. And then as far as the FCC, I know that review is in process. I actually do have a determination of no hazard to air navigation from the FAA. So I can, I mean, I can submit that now, or I mean, it can just be included with the...
If you could email that information to...
Sure, yeah, well, yeah, I can give you this copy right now.
Okay.
I'll send that to you. So, you know, it's all things that are in the works. And, you know, we're obviously ready, willing, and able as soon as it's, as soon as it's available to submit that documentation, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, bring it back to the commission.
There's some things that we need to seriously think about. Technically, we cannot discriminate against a wireless carrier. But this is not a wireless carrier. This is a tower. And if you saw, we're not co-locating anything. We're not building anything. We're hoping that we can put up another tower and somebody will come. AT&amp;T is already on an existing site. So that has nothing to do with what our policy is. It's already on that site. This is not a co-location. I know better than any of y'all the financial rewards of having a cell tower on your land. I also know better than y'all what a landman says and what comes to you are two different things. So I have experience on that that makes me ice. I told you what happened twenty-five years ago. We discussed this point. We knew there was going to come a time when tower companies were going to want to start putting up more and more towers only so that they could compete for rent lease. And lo and behold, it's now come to fruition. Now, that bothers me a lot. I don't like taking money out of any landlord's pocket. But I also don't see a need of putting up another power when that power with that same company is not going to provide better service. If this was going to provide better service, I'd be all, I'd jump on it. But I personally don't see better service. I don't see the benefit to the citizens of the US, you know.
Any other discussion?
The trouble also is the, when it talks about the character of the neighborhood, it's, you know, precedence has already been set when you have, see, because then there's no real guidance on what does the character of the neighborhood mean, you know? I mean, there's nothing really in the code that defines, you know, like I say, it's, if you already have something, a use that's similar there, you know, that was approved before, I mean, it's, this is why we're probably, when we update our zoning regs, we're going to have to really address. And I, like I say, I can legally, I can go through and get some sort of legal counsel and see what county council says and work with them. And maybe some people outside of, you know, that are in the profession, legal profession. But, you know, it's, there's not much guidance right now in terms of like determining like where it talks about view sheds. Well, there's never been a view shed that's really been established in this area. And so...
Yeah, one question I had, because we have, this topic comes up every few years.
Uh-huh.
We go through the same thing over and over again. And the last direction we had from county council was we don't have a whole lot of authority to do much here. And I guess we need some clarification as to what can and can't we do as a zoning board?
Well, right now, I mean, the way it tells you, it says, and basically, and this is, I'm reading right from our code. And it basically says, Celine County Planning Commission will consider hazards to rights of way and roadway easements, hazards to stormwater drainage, hazards to developing in the floodplain or floodway, effect of the facility on the character of the neighborhood, and protection of view sheds and other public health, safety, and welfare problems. Again, there's, the last two are kind of subjective, and I'm not really sure, you know, there's no real clear guidance as to what that...
But it doesn't give us a whole lot of...
No.
Teeth or anything to do...
No. And what I can do also is, like I say, I'll talk to county councils as well and see what they would say. But I said, we're really, like they said, it's, you know, I've, I agree with what you're saying about it's getting to a point now where there's, there's so many that they're competing now. But that becomes, the issue becomes, is that a civil issue between two carriers or between two companies? You know, I mean, that's the thing, and so...
Tim, that does not prevent us from denying a town.
Okay.
That's the thing. Now, if we were denying AT&amp;T, that'd be different. We're not denying AT&amp;T. We're not discriminating.
The location of, and the way that I was always, and I may have been wrong, maybe I was wrong. But for the past ten, fifteen years, I've been informed that, you know, that a, once a site is, has been approved by, you know, the feds, you know, then it's, it's pretty much, you know, at that point, you have to approve the site. Now, I might be wrong. I might be totally wrong on that. And that's where I'm going to have to get a clarification. But that's my, has always been my interpretation for the past fifteen, sixteen years.
Is this, is this something we can seek some guidance from county council on before we move forward?
We can, if you want me to, you can table it.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Talk to county council.
This is not the first time we've been through this. We've been through it multiple times, and it's, we always get stuck on this. What can we do as a zoning commission versus what we're being mandated from the state and the feds?
Right.
You know, I think we need to know what, what do we have? You know, what is our, what are our options?
Because my initial interpretation was, well, it's, if it's between carriers or between two cell tower construction people, I said, that's more of a civil issue. And do we get, you know, and that's the question I'll ask. I said, is that more of a civil or is that, you know, one of those issues that? And so, and see, what teeth do we have in terms of if we can deny something or not?
The way it's written, I think the only thing outside our rules is the five feet of height.
Right. The variance of the five foot.
And I don't really see any problem with it other than...
Yeah, according to our current regulations, that's...
Even our current understanding. Because that was our understanding, that we just kind of, we had to make sure that they fit those guidelines. And then it's, we didn't have any other leg to stand. We couldn't say, it's not in my backyard. And it wasn't, it wasn't a case of...
No, and that was a direction we received from council, from county council a few years ago. Just, we're still in the...
Do we grant a, if we do this, I guess we can legally grant that variance?
For the height, you can grant it. It gives you the authority to grant a five-foot variance for the height, yes.
Well, I'd like to see, would you like a motion to table? Yeah, I'd table, like to table CUP, get my eyes on here, just add an I replaced, lens replaced. CUP twenty-two dash one oh two and advise staff to, or instruct staff to talk to county councillor Mike Montoya and get his... and get his guidance before we move on.
Okay. And I'll also probably give a call to my colleagues in other counties and see how they handle it as well. I'll try having something for you at the next meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we table application CUP 22-102, pending further investigation from staff with county council and counterparts. Do we need to set a date for that, for this next meeting?
We can make it for the February meeting.
Okay. All right, for your motion, okay. So...
She's confirming the date.
I'm looking at my calendar. It would be February 7th.
For the February 7th meeting?
Right. And we have a, pardon the, the colloquial term, the shot clock on the application has to be, so you would have to make a move one way or the other at the, at the next meeting, because we have like a hundred and twenty days to... A hundred and eight, yeah.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, that we postpone or table this application, pending further review to the February 7th meeting. All in favor, raise the right hand?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you for your time, we will revisit this one.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And just to let the public know with regard to this case, we won't publish it again, but I think out of courtesy, we may just send a notice out again and just let you know, but we will not be publishing it in the paper. Since it is tabled, we're not required to, really, we're really not technically required to publish, and so we'll, we won't be publishing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, item four, application CUP 22-103.
I need to visit really quick with Hannah for just a minute.
Okay.
Okay. Now we're ready.
Go ahead, proceed.
CUP 22-103. This is the second of the public, yeah, emergency management towers that has been, the, the second one that's going to be in consideration. This one's going to be located at 3877, or in the vicinity of 3877 Brookville Road. This is, the applicant is Emily Roseberry. I will make a, a, I was going to say, is it, it's about a 350-foot public communications tower. Parcel is zoned agricultural and within the rural development area. Celine County is in the process of upgrading their emergency communication system. County has approved a land swap with an adjacent property owner to construct the tower at the most feasible and optimal location. This will involve construction of a specialized 350-foot emergency communications tower for coordinating emergency services of various jurisdictions. The tower will meet the one-to-one setback ratio from adjacent property lines. Tower will, tower is not located within an airport buffer zone. Site plan has been submitted and included for your review. FAA and FCC documentation must be submitted for the site. This antenna will, will provide enhanced communication capabilities to aid in coordination between the various emergency services within Celine County, as well as coordination with some extraterritorial jurisdictions. The proposed location of the tower is the best site as it will meet both the required setbacks and optimum height for communications. It should be noted that the state and the federal government have emphasized the importance of coordinating emergency communications between jurisdictions, and this proposal is in keeping with that. The county consultant has been working with P&amp;Z staff to ensure the compliance with the zoning regulations. Access to this tower site is off Crittenton Road, and permanent access easement to the tower site is part of the real estate agreement. Public comments, I think that there's, I think there's only been one comment, and that was actually, no, that was for the one that was for, we just read previously. No other comments from other departments or agencies. Planning Commission may approve the conditional use if it complies with the, as outlined in section 1306. And so basically, this use would be consistent with similar uses approved by, in the recent past, for communications towers. The use poses no adverse impact on the adjacent properties and uses, with no effect on traffic in the area. This use is essential to public safety and will enhance the safety and welfare of the county residents. Tower is appropriate, given its rural location and adjacency to a construction yard. Or the, the tower will meet and upgrade our existing anticipated system and will provide enhanced communications for police, fire, and EMS. Staff recommendation is approval, provided a beacon light be installed per FAA requirements, and FAA and FCC approval must be submitted for staff records. Approve the request as an alternative with the listed above, or conditionally approve the request with other conditions as the commission deems necessary. And this is located down on the, you can see on the site plan, south of the, of the, you know, on the subject parcel, it's going to be, the leased area is going to be in the south portion of the, of that parcel, away from the residential area, so...
Any questions for staff? All right. Any input from the public? Comments? And I'm assuming this is, the applicant's already spoken, so...
Yeah, I suppose so. This is, as Tim had mentioned, this is the second tower to complete our three-site system for the emergency communication system. Just for clarification, this would be a land swap. So the land that would, the tower would sit on would be owned by the county as part of the real estate agreement that we have set forth. So the real estate agreement will not be fully executed until all proper permissions have been received, to include the CUP, but as well as FAA, FCC requirements and everything.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have moved to approve CUP 22-103 in accordance with staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve application CUP 10, 22-103 with conditions detailed by staff. All in favor, raise the right hand? Motion carries. All right. Anything else for us tonight, staff?
Not tonight. I will, like I say, I'll, I'll do my due diligence and try to, and get with Mike tomorrow, and see if I can come up with the, we can put our heads together and see what's, what the scoop is on that, so...
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn.
They moved and seconded. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.